All right. Good afternoon, everybody. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Time is now two past 4:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin? Deputy Mayor McDade? Councilmember Meyer? City Solicitor Gilmschutz will be joining us by phone in closed session. City Manager Paul Dietrich? Deputy City Manager Justin Riggs? CFO Kevin Haney? All right, council, we have one resolution tonight. That is 76-02-2025. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, colon dash four dash twelve. City Council City Manager Contract and Discussion of Proposal for a Bond and Reimbursement for Improvements to City-Owned Property and Land
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Time is now two past four p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullick?
Here.
City Solicitor Gilmsworth will be joining us by phone in closed session. City Manager Paul Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy City Manager Justin Riggs?
Here.
CFO Kevin Haney?
Here.
All right, Council, we have one resolution tonight. That is seven six dash zero two dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, colon dash four dash twelve. City Council's city manager contract and discussion of proposal for a bond and reimbursement for improvements to city-owned property and land physical estate.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Public portion, anyone here wishing to speak from the public on this? Seeing none, we'll close public portion and go into closed session. Nice job, Brian. Thank you. And to our city clerk, we hope you feel better, Aaron. Thank you. Time is four past-
Good evening, everyone. We're coming out of a closed session which we need to close at this point. We will be taking no action on that. I'm sorry, actually, we will be. Is the city solicitor on the line?
He is.
Chris, would you like to talk about the action we're taking this evening?
There's two items listed on the closed session agenda. One is the amendment to a city manager contract. Council anticipates taking action on that will be added to the regular agenda. The other item is the council does not anticipate taking any formal action tonight, but there will be a presentation during the regular session.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay. All in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll open up the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. The time is now 5:07. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of this agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullick?
Here.
City Solicitor Gilenshaw is present via telephone. City Manager Paul Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy City Manager Justin Riggs?
Here.
CFO Kevin Haney?
Here.
All right, council, we have one addition this evening. That is Resolution 89-02-2025, a resolution updating city manager contract for the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right, and on to our Employee of the Month.
Can I?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, we're looking at additions and deletions from the agenda.
Okay.
Are we going to delete at this point?
Why don't we table it at that point?
Table it at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, we're on to the Employee of the Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Employee of the Month this month is Hannah Faulkner. So I'd ask Hannah to come on up while I talk all the nice things about Hannah. Oh, shoot, I forgot my...
Hannah, we waited until we had the biggest audience we had.
See, you waited and you're being brought here. So Hannah's been with us at the city since June of 2021. She's a graduate at Stockton. She was a prior manager at the Cape May Fish Market. She's active in church, loves her dog, Winston. And, you know, and just really, over the last two years, I say, has just really carried the HR office at the city. We have lost a lot of staff in HR and payroll, and Hannah has done just an awesome job just bringing us through everything and making sure, most importantly, that all employees got paid in a timely fashion, so, which all the employees definitely thank her for that. So I just want to say, you know, she's always great to work with and always an asset for C. So this is our Employee of the Month. So thank you, Hannah.
Great job, Hannah. Hannah, on behalf of the City Council, I echo all those sentiments and thank you very much for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, up to updates and old business. City Manager?
So the first update I wanted to give was the community center. So we'd had a really a soft opening. We were holding the recreation fitness classes in the community center, been working with the recreation staff and trying to come up with a vision and what we want to do that. Obviously, we took the survey that Councilwoman Baldwin worked on, I think, two years ago or two years ago, a couple of years ago, and just looking at what the focus was, what the community wanted to see in that facility. And I think from overall within there, I think we were able to accommodate a lot of the programs and elements that the residents asked for. We kind of looked at a preliminary budget for that project. So I kind of wanted to put that plan in front of council and the budget to, you know, make sure the council was okay with that so that we could start looking at budget line items and going through the process of implementing that and kind of constructing it. We've already started some of the, you know, flooring and some of the aspects that needed to get done, but from a programing standpoint, we wanted to make sure council was okay with that project before we move forward.
Personally, it's been great. I'm a participant in the recreation program, and Sue Carroll's here. She's one of the other people that there is regularly. The people who've been going for that aspect of it have been thrilled with it. And I think that taking a look at the plan, it's really going to be a wonderful addition to the community. And it's got a lot of aspects to it that will meet the needs of every age group. So I think it's a really exciting opportunity and project. And thanks, Councilman Baldwin, for the work that she did with the advisory group. But it's really been very well received and people are really excited. And the space is really nice, you know, for what the kinds of programs that are being looked at, so.
And, you know, as long as there's no suggested changes, I'll go ahead and, just so that the public is aware, after, you know, later this week, I'll make sure that that plan gets posted up on the website under our construction project. I'll put it, for now, under the construction project section because it'll be a project that we're going to be working on construction-wise. But I'll put both the estimate and the project plan up there just so that the public can have a better feel and view for what that's going to look like. Thank you.
That's great.
And then the last thing, I know we have on the bills later this evening is the final payment for the Franklin Street School project. And I know that, you know, we had kind of promised to give a summary of what the final tally was. So from a construction standpoint, we were slightly over. I think that the council initially budgeted $2 million. When the final bills came in, where initially they were thinking that was going to be, so it is about a 1.16% overage on the construction standpoint. So it's $2,23,229.66 is the final construction tally. There was obviously additional expenses above that that we had to pay. There were some, because the city had some of the $500,000, one of the $500,000 grants, we had grant administration and application fees that did that. And also, outside of that was the cost for the construction administration of the project, which brought...
I'm sorry, what was the percentage overage again?
1.16.
1.16.
Yeah, 1%. Just over 1%.
Just so folks know this, too, if you look at public projects during and just after COVID, especially with the supply chain issues that we had a couple of years ago, some of the public projects were like 20% and 50% over. I mean, it was pretty incredible.
And especially a project like that where, you know, you're looking at historic renovations. So, you know, they were taking parts of the building, sending them out to try to, you know, not knowing what those costs were going to be when you designed it, you know, to have them, you know, like the accordion walls that are up in the main building. They sent those out to have them refurbished, you know, historic made windows. You know, so there's a lot of elements in that building that weren't just, oh, I'm just going to buy this off the shelf. These were custom things that are really hard to price and budget ahead of time. So I think the county and, not only the county's architect, Michael Calafati, but I think when you look at the construction management staff really kept the control on that. So I think it turned out pretty well. So I just wanted to, you know, list out the final cost for Franklin Street School. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. City Solicitor, who is under the weather, and that's why he's on the phone, and sounds like he has a clothing pin on his nose.
I don't have any updates. Thank you, Mayor.
No? Okay, good. Okay, good. Yeah. City Council, any old business? Okay. On to a presentation from Mac. Mac, you want to, Jody, you want to join us up here at the table? Or at the podium, whatever's comfortable for you?
Whatever's, I'm fine here if you are.
Okay.
Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. The last time I presented to City Council was to report on the findings of an economic impact study commissioned by the Southern Shore Regional Destination Marketing Organization, the Cape May County Department of Tourism, and Cape May MAC. You'll recall, it determined that as a direct result of Cape May MAC's programming, both private and public, some 8,000 things to do 12 months a year, the local economy has been infused to the tune of $196 million annually. There are members of the community present tonight who understand the value of our programming, as well as some of our 156 employees and over 200 volunteers that are directly responsible for that economic impact. We also have members of our board here, too. I just, so everyone just raise their hand. As you know, we operate the city-owned four-acre Emlyn Physic Estate. Included are the 1879 Physic House Museum, the only Victorian house museum in Victorian Cape May, and named New Jersey's Most Beautiful Building by Angie.com, as well as the estate's nine outbuildings. We also operate the historic Cape May Lighthouse, the World War II Tower, six trolley buses for a variety of tours, and we produce the Cape May Music Festival, walking tours, private home tours, a variety of holiday and other activities, have an education outreach initiative, and much more. Cape May locals and property owners, many of which, while not year-rounders, are stakeholders with investment properties here, as well as our business community, benefit both directly and indirectly from our operation, as cooperated by the economic impact study. Since 1988, of MAC's $20 million in successful grant applications, well over $3 million has been directly applied to the Physic Estate. And this does not include the annual non-capitalized improvements and upkeep on the property made annually since 1972, our first lease with the city. In fall 2020, a few months after I began my tenure at Cape May MAC, our historic architect, Bob Russell, and I, Bob from HMR Architects in Princeton, met with the New Jersey Historic Trust to discuss our revised plans for the installation of HVAC and fire suppression systems in the Physic House Museum to protect the structure, the 6,000 artifacts it houses, and of course, our guests and staff. To do that, we were instructed to first apply for historic site management planning grants. The trust also suggested we do a site management plan for not just the house museum, but for the nine outbuildings on the property as well, with the goal of identifying how best we could potentially open them up more so to the public rather than storage, et cetera, such that the Physic Estate would be Cape May's version of Mount Vernon, so to speak. And we did. In fact, three planning grants over the course of two years. A combined planning grant for fire suppression and HVAC, another to formalize the complex HVAC installation plans, and one for adaptive reuse and enhanced public access to the entire estate. While the State Historic Trust was there to not only fund these planning grants, but also there to fund the capital improvement grants to bring the plans to fruition, there has been a decreased number of other potential sources to match the trust grants. At present, every three years, the New Jersey Cultural Trust will offer capital grants, and the Cape May County Open Space Program will fund some capital projects. The county grants, though appreciated and helpful, and we have a longstanding relationship with County Open Space Board, have in recent years restricted fire suppression to 25% of the total project cost and precluded any HVAC or adaptive reuse projects. The Open Space Program has never included funding for planning or professional service fees as part of a project. So that would be engineers, architects, or archaeologists, et cetera. This has left a gap in funding of projects prescribed by the historic site management plans, some of which are underway due to their urgency or grant timeline requirements. Following is a list of projects, all but one are or are anticipated to have Historic Trust match since they have already approved the historic site management plans that they funded. But they need further match. But they need further match. Council has reviewed this list, they have had this list in their possession, and totaled as $2,176,380. We have begun discussions with the city to consider including these projects in a city bond issue. The city's bond counsel, Archer Greiner, determined that since the Physic Estate is a city-owned asset, it is permissible. And the city's auditor, Ford Scott, which happens to also audit our annual budgets at Cape May MAC, has reviewed this proposal. Precedent was set and established in 2014 when the city, having a better bond rate and capacity than the local Board of Education, bonded on its behalf for $2 million in swimming pool improvements. The tether making that permissible at that time was a shared service agreement which allows city residents to use the pool at specific times. If Cape May MAC were to go to a local bank for roughly $2.2 million 20-year loan, we would end up paying $2,216,400 in additional interest alone. Conversely, our interest cost on a 10-year municipal bond would be about $343,000. That's at an estimated 2.95%. Just as we pay the city at the beginning of each year for our portion of insurances-
Jody, sorry to interrupt you. Can you, can you say those two numbers again? What would be the interest on a, on a regular commercial loan?
Sure, $2,216,400. And if we were to do a 10-year municipal bond at the going rate, which Kevin is estimating right now, we would pay $343,000.
So, I mean, a huge savings, obviously.
Yeah, even if we were to do a 20-year bond, we would still be paying probably a fourth of what we would-
It's amazing.
-on the open market.
Sorry to interrupt, thank you.
No, I appreciate to reinforce that. So we believe it is a total win-win for all concerned. Oh, no, what I wanted to finish saying was, um, payment process. Just as we pay the city at the beginning of each year for our portion of insurances to the Atlanta County Joint Municipal Insurance Fund, we would pay the annual bond payment directly to the city before it is due. So in short, with no exposure to Cape May City taxpayers. We believe this is a total win-win for all concerned. A, we pay 100% of our portion of the bond. B, we're partnering to preserve a key city asset, the most iconic house and its outbuildings on the remaining four acres, which once were 17 acres owned by Dr. Physic, green space in the center of the city. Resolution agreement between the city of Cape May and Cape May MAC would cite these projects exclusively to what is covered in the bond. It would not include any capital improvements to other properties we administer or our other responsibilities. We would share with the city all grant application and reimbursement packets sent to the Historic Trust and continue to share all annual financials as we have provided financial information dating back to 2018, pre-pandemic, as part of this request. As the mayor duly noted in his State of the City address a couple of weeks ago, the city has made a whole host of proactive and necessary capital improvements. And still, due to sound fiscal management, the city's debt ratio has decreased appreciably. So to recap, our partnership with the city represents our longstanding relationship. MAC's steadfast commitment to the Physic Estate is our home. In fact, what Cape May was formed for, to save from demolition 55 years ago. It is important again to stress, we are not asking for money to pay for these improvements. We just need a more affordable financing option to maintain and improve the city's most historic valuable property asset. MAC already pays its full share of the JIF each year, and we would continue to do the same with the bond payment. The city's bond council has determined it's permissible. The city has determined that Cape May MAC has the financial capacity to pay annually, and the city has the bonding capability. MAC has invested millions into the Physic Estate and capital improvements, plus tens of thousands in annual maintenance and other enhancements each year. Still, necessary capital projects finally need to be addressed and require match. Our responsibility is to maintain and improve the entire four-acre property that we lease from the city. Cape May MAC's other capital responsibilities are not included in this request. Much of which contributes to that aforementioned nearly $200 million in economic impact on an annual basis to Cape May is programming that takes place at the Physic Estate. The last frames of this PowerPoint contain a list of community service that Cape May MAC has always and continued and will continue to provide, most of which are free for all city residents, taxpayers, and visitors. Sincere thanks for your time and thoughtful consideration for this responsible extension of our longstanding partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you, Jody. Um, so for the folks at home and here, uh, we asked MAC. MAC presented the city with basically the same presentation that you, you just saw. Um, with, you can hold up the binder, that binder full of information, uh, that, uh-
This is just one planning grant.
Yeah, right. So gave a very professional and compelling, um, um, argument, perhaps you could say, um, to, to the, to the city council. We did ask MAC to come to the city council, present the same, um, information to the public. And we did so without having anything on the agenda this evening. Um, the next step for the city would to have a, a bond ordinance on the agenda for first reading and then, of course, second reading. Um, I just want the public to know exactly the process that would, would go forth, uh, if we were to approve this. Um, so the public would, of course, have an opportunity this evening to comment, but as well as that first reading and second reading on a potential bond. I'll comment and obviously open it up to any questions and comments to council and just let the public know that, uh, obviously, council's already been asking a lot of questions. Um, and I'm going to start with saying, when Jody first, uh, presented this to me, I was a little bit suspect, to be honest. Um, kind of avoided a couple of phone calls, but as always, Jody calls back.
Glad you admitted that.
And, um, because it is, it is a little different than some of the things that the town, town has done. You, of course, uh, brought up the pool, which I think all in all was a very successful, uh, thing for the city and, and still gives us a lot of entertainment today and, and recreation. But as I got into this more and dug into the details with yourself and, and staff members and professionals, um, I, to me, it, it makes all the sense in the world. The, I would say to the public in the city of Cape May, we own the property. It's our building. Um, MAC has been, you cannot say any better stewards of the property that you, you can think of. It just has been an excellent partnership for the city. Today's February 4th, 2025. You can go to an excellent, um, museum right now, see on the, the Green Book in Cape May. I mean, no matter what time of the year, you have something excellent going on that provides really a wonderful service to, obviously, our tourism and, and brings in a lot of, uh, we talked about the financial amount, um, but provides a lot of entertainment and, uh, recreation really for our community as well. But ultimately, it's about numbers. And, um, I think when I look at the capital expenditure list that you provided, um, frankly, those are all capital expenditures of a, a city-owned property, right? That it's, it's our, it's our house, it's the, the community owns it. Um, and when you look at the things that you're attempting to do on those capital expenditures, whether it be wheelchair accessibility and, and ADA accessibility, of course, that's not just wheelchairs, um, public restrooms, um, HVAC, uh, fire suppression, all things that I think all of us agree are so important to preserving that building, which if you don't know, is a key contributing property to our national historic landmark status. Probably, besides the Chalfont, the key key. But, uh, but everyone knows how special that is. And really kind of kicked off the preservation, uh, for the city of Cape May. So anyone who knows that history knows, knows that.
Mr. Carroll's here, and Mr. and Mrs. Carroll were, were at the, at the very beginning. At stage one, yep.
Yeah. So to me, it's, it's, not only are we helping support financially our local economy because we're supporting MAC and everything that you do, but we would be preserving, uh, we would be supporting historic preservation. Obviously, um, when it comes to wiring, which look, what, what, I think most of the people in this room have been on that tour, uh, of the improvements that need to be done. There's obvious improvements that need to be made. And I'm repeating myself, but ultimately, this is the city's building. We need to make sure it's safe and, and accessible. Um, so the fact that we would have a partner that would be willing to make those payments basically on their own, yes, it would be a loan from the city. You would be taking advantage of our excellent credit rating, which is a tribute to the taxpayers of Cape May. Um, but that savings is huge, $1.9 million. Um, so for the city to be able to harness, uh, our credit rating to help somebody who helps the, the town so much, to me, it makes all the sense in the world. Um, obviously, what's important to the taxpayers of Cape May and, of course, the, the city council is to make sure we have a contract that puts all of the provisions and protections necessary, um, in case ever, anything ever did happen with MAC. Um, one of the biggest protections in that case is the capital expenditures that we are taking care of are frankly, again, the responsibility of Cape May anyway. Um, so I might be talking myself into a, a, a worse negotiation with MAC. But, but it's the truth. Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll end it there and take any other questions or comments from council. But, uh, so, uh, council, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, I, I know the council's been working on this with the MAC for about six months. Um, all of these, everything that you said, um, Jody and Mayor Mullock, um, I think we all concur with. Um, but we're now, we're presenting it to the public because we don't have necessarily all the answers or all the questions. Um, so we'd like to, you know, we're not acting on this tonight, as the mayor said, but we would like to have the public's input. Um, and we see a lot of public here in support of it. Um, but, you know, we, we would like to hear that as well.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add that, um, through this process, um, Jody and the rest of the team have been very forthcoming. Um, the amount of information that was shared, um, any question that was asked, um, they've done their due diligence in looking at what needs to be improved. And as the mayor has said, this is really, they're making the investment on behalf of the city in many ways. Um, and so it is, they are the stewards of the property. Um, and they are doing what is necessary to not only preserve, but also to make sure that it has continuity for the future generations. So, um, there's a lot of details that go into this. Um, and so those will be worked on by the parties involved. But, you know, from my perspective, we've asked the questions and we've gotten the answers. There hasn't been anything that, at least in my opinion, that I've been uncomfortable with uh, when I've asked for the information. So I truly do appreciate the, the amount of detail that has been provided through this.
Thank you. Anything else, council?
Just add this, I mean, the-
Turn your mic on.
Um, the, the working together of MAC and the Physic Estate, I mean, it's a, it's a 52-year success story. Um, just the, the work that has been done and when you just walk the grounds and just be able to, um, you know, to, to enjoy that, you know, what has built up an incredible amount of goodwill, um, with MAC and the community, as well as credibility, because you produce results. Um, we do have to look at this in terms of a financial transaction, and we have to be objective about that. And when you look at this, and first off, the, the presentation of the amount of the savings from a commercial loan as, as opposed to structuring the transaction is, it's an, obviously, it's an incredible savings. And, you know, one looks at it and it's pretty difficult to look at that and say that taking a commercial loan is the right way to go. I mean, when you look at the structure of this, the nature of this transaction, there's a compelling reason why we're having this discussion, why you're making this presentation, why this is going to be taken seriously. But the, the other aspect of it, that's important, I, I'm sure, to myself and I'm sure to, um, to, to everybody, is the fact that Cape May is, the city is in such a strong fiscal position to be able to entertain such a notion, to be able to, um, talk about create, having a transaction like this, being able to take a bond, creating, creating a loan, which would ultimately would be a zero-sum transaction for the city, uh, whereby the cost would be borne by, by MAC with incredible benefits for the Physic Estate and for the entire community, but without, even without having that opportunity cost. That opportunity cost being, we have such, um, we're so robust from a point of view of, of bonding capacity that the city, um, is in a position to be able to entertain taking on this type of transaction, but knowing that it's not going to adversely affect any other decisions that the council would make on behalf of, of other projects for the city.
Counsel, the, the two words that, that I've heard and what, what I said earlier were partnership and responsibility. And, and the way we look at it is, is for 50-some years, there've been a lot of people who've been part of MAC. There've been a lot of people who have been sitting on city council, and there's always been a working relationship there. And they've, they've established a legacy. And, you know, I think we all believe that we want to leave what we inherited in even better shape than what we founded. And this is our mutual legacy, is to take what has been done to the Physic Estate heretofore and take it to the next step. Finally, it had, you know, for it to have fire suppression, for it to finally have, um, HVAC system, for it to finally have a better sanitary sewer system, instead of calling the plumber every two weeks to, you know, to, uh, fire out the drain, you know, clear out the drain. So this is, this is our legacy that we would be leaving to the next generation of Cape May residents.
Yeah, thank, uh, thank you, Jody. Um, one thing I would say too, just, um, to the taxpayers, um, we, we as a council asked, uh, a former council member, Michael Jaeger and Maureen McDade to do an analysis of the financials from MAC. They were very transparent, and as Jody said, uh, they're audited each year. So we went through all those finances. And, um, one of the things we, we asked was, what if you got, didn't get any grants? You know, what, what, what would be the impact? And even with that, the, the revenue would support being able to pay, uh, the, the loan. So that made me much more comfortable. Um, and again, at worst-case scenario, the city would have to pay this. But again, I go back to the fact that we own the property, so. Um, with that, we can open it up for, uh, public, yeah, please, Mr. Meyer, I'm sorry.
I just think, uh, it's, I just want to add that the MAC brings so much to the community, and, uh, it's clear that there's so much support for the MAC. And I'm glad that we're going through this process, which is so important because it should be public and everybody should be involved in this endeavor as a partnership. That's all.
And I also would say, Alexis Batten is here from Archer and Greiner, who's our bond counsel. Um, so if anybody has any specific questions about the bond, again, we'll have first reading and second reading at, at, at future, uh, um, meetings, but feel free to take advantage of that fact. Uh, we'll open it up for public comment, and if anyone would like to speak on this topic only, we'll, we'll have another open, uh, comment period for anything else. Thank you.
And if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Father Alan Leonard. Uh, I actually don't live in Cape May, but I pastor Church of the Advent on the corner of Franklin and Washington, one of the historic contributing properties. You see in the bulletin on the wall over there and right across the street. Um, we've talked a lot about the advantage for business, a lot about the need to preserve our historic properties and the city's responsibility for that. I would like to put in the importance to religious institutions. Uh, Church of the Advent partners with MAC to host two concert series a year and to be on the Candlelight Tour of Homes, which brings lots of people into town. Um, but it also brings lots of people into the church. This is ministry and outreach for us in partnership with MAC, and I very much appreciate that partnership. I think if my other ministry colleagues in town would speak to this, I'm sure a lot of them would also feel that MAC is a great supporter of the religious community uh, in the way we can partner on various events. Matter of fact, Lunch and Learn tomorrow for Black History Month is going to deal with the, um, Macedonia Baptist Church and, uh, their religious history in town. So it's important for the religious community as well as the business community in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Anyone else this evening? Mr. Roush, take your time.
Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. I'd like to congratulate both the city and MAC because this is, this partnership, which has been mentioned so many times, is important. As many, many of you know, Cape May, one of the unique things of Cape May is we have a lot of nonprofits, and they fulfill a tremendous number of activities and opportunities for both those of us who live here and those who visit. But the important thing- But the important thing is that this is another indication of the cooperation with a nonprofit that has worked a vehicle with the city to achieve a goal of a lower cost and provide the same service, which is a great, great opportunity. Because our nonprofits, by virtue of the contracts that they have with the city, obligates the nonprofits to pay for their capital improvements. So it's, it really is a win-win for everyone in addition to the taxpayers. So I congratulate both organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jules. Anyone else this evening? Go ahead.
I'm Hillary Pritchard, 312 Washington Mall, owner of The Whale's Tail for 51 years. So I, we arrived in town after college. In fact, I taught printmaking in the, I think it was the Hay Building with Ray Schultz. I don't know if anybody here remembers Ray Schultz, but he was a printmaker who lived in town. And so I'm excited about the fact that you might be opening up those buildings again for some other use, but that was a great summer. But anyway, so we, we've shared this path, MAC and all these years, and Tom and Sue and Gardner House. I remember all the people who, who took a chance, you know, and really believed in hard work, and it was a wonderful time to be here in Cape May. So I just want to thank MAC for helping raise $200 million a year. Was it 200 million a year?
Yeah, 197, I think they said.
And bringing that to town, bringing people to town, richness for the residents and also for the tourists. I think a lot of residents would come out and speak to how much MAC means to them. So I just, I totally endorse this project. I hope you do, too.
Thank you, Hillary. Anyone else this evening? Okay, we'll close public comment on this topic and move to the, where are we, public? Oh, we'll, we'll move into public portion on resolutions this evening. Anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions only this evening? Please.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I understand we're adding a resolution that we weren't able to look at before the meeting, so I'm just asking questions about it.
We'll, we'll keep that off the consent agenda if that's, are you talking about the additional one?
Right. Can I not ask questions on it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so it's, it has to do with this.
You know what? Can I, can I allow the solicitor to introduce it? Do you mind, Stacy, just because he was going to give an explanation on it?
Okay, just so that my questions get answered?
Yeah.
The salary and what the percentage increase is?
Okay, salary and percentage increase?
Right, and then I think his contract was for, was for a number of years, so why are we going back and looking at it again?
Right? There's no.
Was it? I'm just asking. I don't know. I don't know these questions. That's why I'm asking.
Hold on one second while the public just walks out.
Anyone who doesn't want to listen to the rest of this is welcome to.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
This doesn't count as my time, does it? No.
Justin?
Justin.
Could, could you ask Chris to just give us an introduction? And just, just give us the regular introduction.
So the amendment to the contract.
We're going to take, we're going to take a minute recess here.
One second, Chris, one second.
Just let everyone.
You, you're, the five-minute timer's still on.
Time's up.
Okay, we'll, we'll come out of recess and our solicitor could give us a brief description of the resolution, if you would.
You ready for me?
We're ready, Chris.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so the, the change to the city manager contract is very limited and narrow in scope, and it just pertains to vacation and sick time accrual and the impact of unused time. The current city manager contract actually provides less protection and benefit to the city manager than would the default provisions in the Personnel Policy Manual. So all that's proposed here to, to change is that vacation and sick leave will accrue consistent with the default provisions in the Personnel Policy Manual, just like any other employee that's subject to those terms. So it's just bringing the city manager up to snuff with the Personnel Policy Manual.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, and he answered your questions?
I think so.
Okay, good.
Because he, my question was, and you guys answered before he did, that there was no increase in salary?
No increase, yeah.
And the contract is still in force, was it three years or something, or?
Yeah.
Okay, four years, okay. But we're down to three years now? Or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. My, my question has to do with Resolution 7702, and it has to do the change order for the Lafayette Street Park Nature Center trails. Usually in these resolutions, we see what engineer is doing the change control and approved it. I didn't see anything on who approved the change order.
City manager, you want to?
It came over as a recommendation.
Thank you.
It might not have been attached, but it came over as a recommendation from Vince Orlando's office, engineering design. They're the project engineer for the project.
That's, that's fine. Usually no, because there's so many different engineers for different projects, I wasn't sure who.
But that's their project.
Okay, that's their project. So they approved this change order, then?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question has to do with Resolution 8402. And my question here is, I, I see we're going to have to bid for electric vehicle trolleys, and I'm assuming this is going to be instead like a maybe a jitney? Is that what that's for?
That's possible, how we would anticipate utilizing them in, in lieu of the jitney service in the future.
Okay, because my question is then, why are we giving the jitney a two-year contract? And?
It'll take that loan to procure those.
Till 2027?
And have them online, yes.
Okay, I'm just asking because I wasn't sure why we were doing two years there, but yet we're going out to bid for the electric.
More than likely, once we even got the bids back and then had to place an order, once we identified funding, it would more than likely be pretty close to that amount of time.
Okay.
Especially by the time this, from a seasonal standpoint, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't probably be ready to operate for that next season.
Thank you for your time.
And, and just, and this wasn't your question, Stacy, but it is using a grant that we received specifically for that purpose.
What, the electric trolleys?
Yeah.
Okay, because usually we just do one year for jitney every year, and I'm surprised to see two, and then to see the other resolution saying, hey, what about, you know?
Yeah.
That, thank you.
Anyone else on resolutions this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on resolutions and move to the consent agenda. Council, do I have any, anything you would like to remove from the consent agenda?
You're just set for it?
Oh, yes, so which, which one is that?
8602, 2025.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table 8602, 2025?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And it's just to collect more information, that's all. I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
We anticipate to see this on the next agenda?
I would hope so, yes. Counsel, okay with that, next agenda? Okay, all right. Anything else, council? Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call. Do you have a question?
Yeah, is that including 8902, 2025?
We'll add that to the regular agenda. We'll do a separate roll call for that. And just for the record, Councilmember Bodnar, you will abstain from the minutes. Okay, all right. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Abstaining from the minutes and vote yes on the resolutions.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
All right, and for the regular agenda, we have 89-02-2025, Resolution Updating City Manager Contract for the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And again, this is, as the solicitor just stated, just basically getting this in conformant.
Consistent with the other city employee manual.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes. New business, any new business, city solicitor, if you can hear us? Okay, city manager?
None this evening, thank you.
Deputy city clerk?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Thank you for filling in.
Absolutely.
And again, we hope Aaron feels better, and Chris, we hope you feel better. Councilmembers, let's see, we have, Councilwoman Baldwin?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Deputy mayor?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Oh, skip Bodnar. Councilman Bodnar, sorry about that.
It's okay, nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Meyer?
You know, always working hard and behind the scenes, that's all.
Good stuff, thank you. And I'll, I'll join the club, nothing, nothing for me. Anyone here wishing to speak from the public? Please come on up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia. I just want to clarify the library project of $2 million that the city's paying. If you go back and you look at the project when it was introduced, it was supposed to be nothing for the city to pay for because you're going to get all these grants, and the total project was going to be $2 million. And if you get all these grants, it was going to be nothing to the city to pay for it, which is why the bond never went out to bid or out to bond for it, was because of the fact it was going to be, it was going to cause the city nothing to move over, it was going to be $2 million rehab. So actually, the library project actually cost probably over $6 million because it was split three ways. So actually, the city's paying $2 million of what they thought they were going to be paying, nothing.
Anyone else this evening? Oh, Jules, I'm sorry, Mr. Roush?
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. I, I noticed in the bills, we're making the first payment to the Cumberland County inspection. When we're, are they earning that now as we go forward, or?
That, that sum, that sum will pay them up until, for all their services, up until they, we let a construction contract. So they will be working with our architect and our staff to review progress drawings, final construction drawings, specifications, like that. So that's what that will encompass. So yes, are they working? Yeah, they've started working. But that's, that'll be the only payment that they will have for the, for the, that phase.
Will they be participating in any way in the examination of soils on the footprint for the building?
No, that's not their expertise.
Okay. And can I also assume that maybe this last payment for furniture at the firehouse would be the last large expenditure? There's $34,000 in furniture expenses.
That was for, yeah, I, I can't say that there won't be another, I mean, for the initial construction, yes, that was the last expenditure for that, yes.
Just on that, Mr. City Manager, that is part of their budget, right? I mean, that.
Yes.
Yeah, that was. One of their expenses.
That was, it was not part of the, the construction.
Right.
Budget, that was part of some, a capital.
Jules, you understand that, right? That that's not, it's not part of the building construction, that's just part of their operating budget?
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you get that. They, they have furniture and office supply, it was, what was the bill?
It was, it was furniture for, it was the tables and chairs in the training room.
They, they have that in their budget every year for something, just, yeah, okay.
It was, it was, it truly wasn't part of the capital, part of the project, no, it was, it was second, it's just part of their normal operation that they would have purchased anyway.
See a final report?
Yes.
See a final cost report?
What, the project is still open? We have not released final payment for that, so when we release final payment, we'll release the final numbers.
For the record, Mr. Roush just asked for a final accounting, basically, on the, on the building?
Yes.
And we will, we will have that when it, when it's closed out.
Right, okay.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Time is 5:58.